Okay, let's go ahead and get started for the Silver City Planning and Zoning Commission for Tuesday, May 5th, 2015. If everyone would please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if one of you would take a roll call for us. Just in time for roll call.
Commissioner Clement?
Here.
Commissioner Stephen?
Here.
Commissioner Furby?
Commissioner Saddle?
President.
Commissioner Steenbaum?
Here.
Okay, and tonight, if you've all had a chance to look over the agenda, did anybody have any changes or corrections, or is everyone fine with the agenda? Would anyone care to move to approve the agenda?
So moved.
All seconded.
Okay, all in favor of approval of tonight's agenda? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor, so then we move on to the minutes from April 7th, last month, and did anyone have any questions, comments on those minutes?
I do. I would move to approve the minutes with one correction, and that is a typo under community input, paragraph 2, line 2, it's very minor, it says "as" and it should say "at."
Ah, please contact Josh at, it says the DM.
Okay. So I move to accept it with that one correction.
Uh, seconded.
Okay, all in favor of approval of the minutes with the correction under community input? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So minutes have passed for April 7th. Okay, tonight we are having a public hearing, TA 15-01. I request for a recommendation of an amendment to the text of the Land Use Code of 2010 to the Town Council. And do I need to swear in either of you ladies, one of you, or both of you, and are one of you swearing in the other?
Uh, Tracy can swear, me.
Okay.
Repeat after me. Oh, thank you. I, state your name.
I, Jamie Imbick.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That the testimony I am about to give.
That the testimony I am about to give.
Will be the truth.
Will be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
On penalty of perjury.
On penalty of perjury.
Good evening, Commissioners. These are the proposed land use codes, changes that you have in front of you, and they've come about as we used the Land Use Code of 2010. Certain cases brought up certain items. We review it as we use it as staff, other changes came to mind. It's suggested in the comprehensive plan that it be done every five years and then a major update every 10. So this is a staff-initiated suggestion, and your role tonight is to recommend approval, recommend nonapproval, or to recommend approval with changes. So if there's an item on here that you, as a commission, disagree with or would like to alter, you're welcome to do that. And then the final decision will be heard by the Town Council, probably the first meeting in June. So if you'd like, I can go through each item and give you kind of the reasoning and the background on each item. So you'll notice that the blue section is what exists in the Land Use Code, and if it's been revised, it'll be in black type. So for the existing rural district, 311, Mr. Russell and the former mayor, James Marshall, who is now our department head, wanted to kind of flesh out the description of the rural area, and as we go forward with the rezoning efforts this year, there'll be not as much area of the town that is probably rurally zoned. Boston Hill is currently rurally zoned, it should be open space, so this description is going to apply to smaller and smaller areas of the town. The revised table, 3.2 uses, food trucks have come about in popularity since the Land Use Code was adopted in 2010, and they weren't listed specifically, so we've added them in. Vehicle sales, as we noticed from Mr. Eggnall's application, were not listed, so we've added them in. And church religious assembly, we've changed to be allowed similarly to a school, so that the, because we noticed in the cases with St. Francis that they really have a lot of the same use type issues, and so we've made it, it was more restrictive than schools, and we've made it equal to schools, except we're allowing it industrial if they so chose to have one there. Schools are conditional use in industrial. Section 3.3.1, recycling centers, we took out the sentence that said chain link fence with slats shall not constitute acceptable screening or fencing. We feel that as a visual screen, that is acceptable. Density and dimensional standards, the change in commercial historic downtown minimal street frontage is zero currently, and we would like that to be 10. And the rear setbacks, we would like to change from 10 to 5. That's because of all of the issues that have come before you, where they had to come and get a variance, and we discussed it with the fire marshal at length and reviewed his fire code. And with each rear yard having a 5-foot setback, that still gives the 10 feet, which they would like to have to get firefighters in, and it still allows for property maintenance and that sort of thing. So you're still having a 10-foot distance between two items at the rear of each property. Table 5.9.2, parking regulations, gas stations weren't listed, so we put them in with vehicle sales, service, and repair, which already had gas pumps in the description, so that was just omitted at some time in a previous edition, and we just added gas stations in. We've added section 5.9.6, alternative parking plans. We already have an alternative landscaping plan. This gives people who are bringing in plans for review the opportunity to either follow the parking plans that are in the book, or to come up with an alternative that makes, that works for them. Say, for instance, Tractor Supply would know that they would never have more than a certain amount of cars in any given time. They can bring us data that shows that they've done traffic studies, and they just don't generate that kind of amount of parking to need that many spaces. And because they had to get a dimensional adjustment to allow, they have more truck and trailer spaces than most places, so the layout of their parking is different because they allowed four or five truck and trailer spaces, where other businesses don't even have those. So it allows businesses that know, this is what we generate, this is our data to show this, here's what we have, and we can review those. Or they can just go by, they can just look online, get the rules, and submit something that way. Table 5.10.2, you'll notice that in your Land Use Code, it says parking lots with 25 or more spaces, it should say fewer, so that was the change we made there. We would like to retitle table 5.12 from residential luminaires to outdoor luminaires, so that those rules also apply to commercial properties. Section 5.15, clear sight triangle, we added C-section 2.2 definitions, because there was no clear reference to that section, and people didn't know what the clear sight triangle was. It wasn't very user-friendly. Revised section 2.36, I'm sorry, 6.2.3 types of permits, we've added the moving permit, and I'll get to that a little later in the handout also. And then procedural chart, administrative procedures, would change the encroachment permit to be the Town Manager, the decision-maker, and the Town Council, the appeal hearing. Currently, the Town Council is the decision-maker. Encroachment permits, when they receive them, they're given notice that it has to be removed within 90 days of written notice if the town requests it, and so we're taking away the requirement that they meet and have a public hearing with the council for that, because it can be taken away with 90 days' written notice. So it would be more user-friendly for the manager to make the decision, and then if they're not happy with that, they can appeal with a hearing to the Town Council. Moving permit is added in there, the Community Development Director making the decision, and the Town Council being the appeal hearing board. And so the existing section of encroachment permit is listed, and the changes were made to say Town Manager may approve instead of Town Council. So that's the changes on those. And then moving permit is, was in the 1999 code, and it was omitted, so we've added it in there, so that people have to fill out a moving permit, and I do have a sample of that, before they move a mobile manufactured or modular home into the town. So that's put back into the code. So I'm happy to go back item by item and answer any questions that you would have.
Jamie, I'd like to know, can you talk about on the rear setback here, that you'll still have 10 feet for the fire people to get in there? How do you do that when everybody has a fence?
Uh, fences are allowed currently, that's not what the setback applies to, you can fence on your property line. This applies to structures, so the fencing wouldn't change at all. It's not that a fire engine can get back there, it's fire personnel.
I asked the fire marshal about a similar situation once, and he said that's why fire trucks have problems.
Yeah, yeah, they have chainsaws, they have, they have, they can get through a fence.
Yeah, I was thinking of the fence, I was just wondering, I was thinking about the truck and stuff.
Yeah, no, it's not for the apparatus, it's for personnel.
And why did they want to change this?
Uh, we've had a lot of people who have small backyards, and the 10-foot setback is a little bit prohibitive for them to actually use their property, and so one of the goals of the comprehensive plan in the Land Use Code is to allow people the best use of their property without infringing on their neighbors. And so if people want to have a shed in their backyard, they, if they have a really small backyard, in some areas of town it prohibited them from building that, or they had to come before the commission and have a public hearing and notify their neighbors to get a variance. And so it's, it's just by, come by use of the Land Use Code, that there are simply a lot of small lots in town, and the people aren't really allowed full use of their property. And so this reduction to the 5 feet allows for fire separation, it allows for separation for maintenance, it allows for those things with a little more give for full use of someone's property.
But what about the encroachment on their neighbors?
It wouldn't encroach, they would have to have to meet the 5-foot setback. So it would be fully enclosed on their property. They're not allowed to build anything within the setback without a variance, and you're not allowed to build encroaching on your neighbor's property. So when the...
What about visual encroachment?
I don't think it would really be more than a fence, but it's definitely a part of the amendments where you have a chance to recommend a change.
I don't know what a clear sight triangle is.
Yes, and that's why we added that in. So now that section will say, please refer to section 2.2 definitions, and the clear sight triangle is defined in that section. And it is areas where no obstruction of vision is permitted, except as authorized in writing by the chief of police below the height of 8 feet and 25 feet back from a corner, as measured along intersection, intersecting property lines, and completed by the imaginary line connecting those two points. A corner street includes intersections, as well as entries and exits of public streets. So that's why we added that in there, because that's what a lot of people were having trouble with, they didn't know what it was, and they didn't know where to refer to in the Land Use Code to find that. So that's also what we tried to clear up in this revision. Some sections refer to others, as in this instance, and it wasn't spelled out clearly for people who aren't familiar with the code.
I think I'll go ahead and read for the, anyone who will be listening, what we need to have for our requirements here, the findings. In this particular case, it's a recommendation to city councils, what we're coming up with, the Town Council, and we have to meet at least one of the following findings. The proposed amendment is in substantial compliance, or not in substantial compliance, with the town's comprehensive plan. Two, the proposed amendment will not adversely affect the implementation of the goals and policies of the town's comprehensive plan, or it will adversely affect the implementation of goals and policies of the town's comprehensive plan. Three, the proposed amendment is justified in order to correct a mistake in the town's comprehensive plan, which a couple of these have, and error in the assumption, in the assumptions about the property, surrounding uses, population forecast, rate of land, consumption, or other factors. The proposed amendment will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or general welfare, and will promote the original purposes of the Land Use Code, or it will adversely impact the public health, safety, or general welfare, and will not promote the original purposes of the Land Use Code. Five, the proposed amendment responds to change conditions, such as changes in assumptions on capital investments, road locations, population trends, land committed to development, density, use of further studies that have been completed since adoption of the Land Use Code, or does not respond to change conditions. Six, the proposed amendment is necessary in order to respond to state and/or federal legislation. Seven, the proposed amendment provides additional flexibility in meeting the objectives of this Land Use Code without lowering the standard of the Land Use Code. It's a little unusual here in the sense that we have a number of changes, and some of them meet one, some of them may meet the other, et cetera, et cetera. It would be correct to say that a lot of times you just have one change you're looking at, and it needs to meet one of these, but in this case, you could say, one of these changes meets a certain need, one meets a different need. What if we have one that doesn't meet any of those criteria?
That's where you have, what do, what you're doing is recommending approval, that it not be approved, or it be approved as changed.
So if we thought, any one of them did not meet any of these, then we would have to correct on that particular one?
Yes, yes. Yes, so it's as a body, you'll recommend it for approval, to not be approved, or to be approved as changed. So if there's one, or two, or three parts of it that you would like to change, so that you feel they all meet one of those conditions, then, one of those findings, then feel free to make recommendations for change. So if you feel that there's one item on here, or two items, or three items, or however many items that don't meet one of these findings, then you definitely feel free to change it, or to recommend it be taken out. So you have complete authority to edit this however you would like, because it will go to the council as it is, and then it will go with your recommendations also, because then they have the authority to also change it.
But we don't have to, as part of, whoever decides to make the first motion doesn't have to list which ones apply to which, they can just list them generically, which apply...
Yes, yes, you can list, you'll see, notice in my staff report, I feel that it meets findings 1, 2, 4, 5, and 7, as a body, in its entirety. And I also would like to note that there, the public notice requirement is different for this, because of, it's not one piece of property, it's a text amendment, so you'll notice that the county commissioners were mailed the letter, that was the requirement for this, and it's not the people within 300 feet. So it was still posted on the town website and publicly noticed like normal for a meeting, and then the Board of Commissioners was mailed a letter also, notifying them of the changes. So that's a little different public notice this time also. First text amendment, so feel free to notice something you would like to see next time, or anything like that also in the procedure.
Whether they feel comfortable with the Town Manager having oversight of encroachment permits.
Yes.
I mean, I think I would probably question that if I was in the council, but I'm not, so I'll leave that to them.
Well, the beauty of that is they have, the council is the one that writes the letter to remove the encroachment, so they still have a check. So that's built into it.
It goes to them as a final step regardless?
Uh, no. If someone was unhappy with the Town Manager's decision, they could appeal his decision to them, and then they would decide. And if the Town Manager approved an encroachment, and they started getting a ton of complaints, the council can write a letter requesting it be removed within 90 days.
Commissioner Saddle?
I have a question. I'm just curious about the historic district zoning. Why, how did it, how was it determined that it was necessary to have 10-foot minimum street frontage?
It was, people, I mean, it was kind of more of a practical consideration, people were trying to do land divisions that just weren't functioning, and without that in there, it was one less way to say, this doesn't really work for the area. So if you would like it to remain zero, that's also another thing that you may edit. It's because of land divisions and property line adjustments and that, it makes it more difficult, if there's no, to create a new lot, what is, what exists there exists, there are a lot that are less than that. But really, for a practical, buildable lot to be split in today's downtown, it needs to have a little street frontage. You need to have some access to the property.
What concerns me a little bit is that, you know, all of those things were set to zero to sort of accommodate the reality of what the historic district is. And I've been mulling this over in my head, trying to think of scenarios where, but I mean, I know in the past, before this was all changed and relaxed, there would be situations pretty frequently where, you know, someone was trying to transfer purpose, the purpose of the use of a property, or they were going to change the use of the property, and because of something in the Land Use Code, you know, it would hold up that process.
So also what happens if you don't have street frontage is it makes it really hard to get a sign permit in that area, because a lot of your sign permits are coordinated with your street frontage, and so if you don't have any, it makes your sign permit very difficult to obtain. So it touches on a lot of areas, that's why it's not as large, you'll notice it's the smallest street frontage requirement in that area. And that's just for new lots that are developed, the ones that exist, exist.
I'm trying to wrap my head around where...
We've had a couple this year, land divisions, up on the end of, right across the street from Mr. Eggnall's industrial property, that was divided this year. So it does happen.
Parcels smaller than 10-foot frontage?
No, but the parcels are still being divided. We've had two or three. And then there's been some boundary adjustments in the area also. And we've had a few people come in that it's really hard for them to get a sign permit. If they have, I'm thinking it was, I was gonna ask Tracy, but she's not swaying. I'm thinking it was Millie's Steakhouse or something, maybe, they have something in the back that they were gonna make a little business, and they didn't have street frontage, it was odd. There's a few little parcels that don't have street frontage, so it really makes it hard for them to get a sign permit.
She can tell you, she just didn't... Oh, that's right, she can tell you and you can tell us.
It wouldn't matter the actual property, but it was right around that area, that it was really hard for them to get a sign permit. So we're trying to make it easier for people to use, which is definitely with your experience, if you think that doesn't make it easier, or if you think it interferes with the character of the neighborhood.
I guess that's really, the only concern that I had sort of reading through it is, to me, it sort of limits flexibility, and to my mind, the point of the historic district zoning was to, you know, ratchet down, you know, there are obviously limitations to being in the historic districts, in terms of what you can and cannot do with your building and your property. So, you know, it's sort of the carrot and the stick, there are some advantages too, in that there aren't parking requirements, and there aren't street frontage requirements, which sort of enhances the flexibility, and I don't know, I mean, it leaves the door open for some cooler things to happen, in theory.
In theory, yeah. But like I said again, it allows for better sign permitting, it prevents new lots being created. We realize that downtown has a bit of its own character in the way the lots are cut up already, with shared walls and everything, shared roofs, so we want to leave what exists the way it exists and not interfere with that, so it would be just new lots that are split. So it would be, for instance, those ones across from Mr. Eggnall that are new, that's what it would apply to. And then it would allow for greater flexibility for signage. But then again, your view as commissioners, it comes to your decision to weigh which one you find more important.
I mean, I'll point out, for instance, in the historic district, there's a lot of folks that don't even mess with hanging a sign, because, you know, window signage is exempt from sign requirements, so, you know, you put a sign on your window, or, you know, you can turn your whole window into a sign if you want to, and you don't have to permit that, because it's exempt. So, I don't know. I guess if there was one that I had any pushback on at all, it would be that one, sort of leery of that a little bit.
Many that are less than 10-foot anyway, right now.
The only ones that I can think of that are close are in the last block, the 800 block of Bullard Street, sort of opposite the Morning Star and the Morning Star and the old Western Station, which parking lot, there's a couple of those storefronts there that would be really close to 10 feet.
Yeah, and so that's where we kind of came up with 10 feet also, kind of matches what exists, there's not really anything smaller than that.
And it's hard to imagine how you might do that, but on the other hand, part of the cool thing about downtown is, and should be, that it's not overly constrained in those sorts of ways, so, I don't know, I do, it just seems to me like a solution that's looking for a problem, but that's, you know, that's all.
All right, this is Rich, what I hadn't even thought, so I want to thank you for bringing this point up.
up. What if there should be major damage to a building, to such an extent that it's just, I don't want this to happen, but should it happen, should there be a fire and a building is destroyed, et cetera? Does this new rule then apply? What if it's one right now that's almost built on the street? Or can you rebuild under the existing footprint?
Okay. I think there's a couple of different answers to that. The first thing is, we have, anything that's non-conforming, if it's destroyed, fire, earthquake, flood, whatever, you have a year to start rebuilding it back to the exact same footprint. That goes for the entire town. And then, this isn't a setback, so it's not a setback. You can still build up to the street, it's just the street frontage along the street. And so if you had less than 10 before your building burnt, you can build on that same footprint within a year.
Is there a power to you that you have to do that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, and your construction doesn't have to be complete, you just have to begin. And that's across the town wide, and that's in non-conforming structures.
I feel like the five-foot setback is not enough. And I feel like because there is the process of asking for variance, that it should be left at 10. If there was no process to try to, you know, adjust that, it could be a problem. But I don't see that it is. It seems like it just is gonna invite everybody to go back.
I guess the issue that I have with that is, the reality is that most people who have, you know, they have a yard, they fence in the whole yard that's theirs. And, you know, that goes into the setback, like you fence all the way to your property line. That's what you do, that's what you can do now, it doesn't matter if it's five, or 10, or 20-foot setback. But, you know, if you do have a small lot, and you want to put a little shed in there, you want to have a carport, or you want to do a gazebo, or a canopy over your barbecue grill, you know, anything that's permanent like that, you would, you know, you would have to come for a variance for that. And, you know, we go through the carport variances all the time. I'm not a huge setback fan myself, but, I mean, if there's a place where they make sense, it's in the front yard where it's what it looks like, what you see. For the rear lot setback, I mean, nobody sees that except you and the person that's right adjacent to you. And I don't know if it makes a difference, the difference if it's five feet or 10 feet away. I mean, I guess I see the impact on the individual property owner there way more than I see the impact on the neighborhood character, I guess, would be my argument about that.
Do you think there's any reason to look at the individual categories with regards to that? Multi-use, single-family, multifamily?
Are you asking me?
Just a general question. We answered before. I mean, basically, the five went right across the board all the way down.
Yes.
I can't think, off the top of my head, I'm just throwing it out, because I don't think of anything off the top of my head, but is there any reason to think that there'd be a difference between the multifamily versus the single-family, versus the single-family attached, detached, et cetera? Any reason why those would make that different?
And then the mixed use. If it's, you know, if it's the front, then that's the real visual.
Right. And the other thing about that, it doesn't say that, but my recollection of why the 10s are in parentheses is because if you have a corner lot, then your rear setback gets reduced to five feet anyway, right?
No, they're just in parentheses because they were changed.
Oh, because you were changing them.
The corner lot really affects the front setback.
Okay.
Because, especially for fencing and things, you can't be in the clear sight triangle, and you have to choose which street you use for your front, and so it really affects the front and the corner. So the parentheses are just to, so it doesn't look like 105.
And basically, it seems like there's two reasons for the whole setback. One is safety for the fire, to be, or any emergency personality to be able to get in there. And two is not to, you know, to give your neighbors a little bit of feel of a buffer zone, or not being right on top of each other.
Yes, and also if you need to repair the back of your shed, you have five feet to put your tools and your things on your own property.
Right.
So it's kind of a maintenance area also. If you need to fix your side of the fence, you have a little room, and you have a little area to be on your own property to do that.
I guess I kind of see both your points. I'm not sure if I fall on it, to be honest.
I think I'm the one who I do think that it's not as big an issue in the back, as already pointed out, it's not affecting the actual look of the neighborhood, for example.
And the size is already five?
Yeah.
And the commercial historic downtown remains zero. Does that area just develop differently anyway? Everything touches, everywhere.
And then it wouldn't be downtown.
Right.
This may sound like a silly question, but it's been running through my mind. If we go back to revised table 3.2, on the first page of our handout, what we're saying, church, religious assembly allowed, this refers to not someone having a religious meeting in their living room, but an actual physical structure, correct?
Yes. Because there are certain, it gets a little complicated when someone is having, say for instance, a prayer meeting in their living room. That's different than the church for this, really. It gets very, there's a few cases around town where people have a group at their home, and they have it a couple of times a week. So that's a little difference. This would be like the commercial plans for St. Francis. And when they come in doing a parking lot, and all of that kind of thing, they wouldn't have to go through the conditional use step, they would just go forward with commercial development review. So any gathering at anyone's home, or any home business, has to comply with different regulations. So say for instance, once a week, it gets really loud, and people are parking on the sidewalk, and things like that, that would be a whole different thing than this. This would be actually for a church to be built there.
And this really resonates with what I've seen around the country, there's actually lawsuits where churches are suing towns because schools are allowed in a place, swimming pools allowed in a place, and that they're not. And they have been winning those lawsuits, and so that probably alleviates that concern too.
Yes. And that was the discussion we had at length with that case, is a school wouldn't have needed a conditional use permit. Schools are conditional uses in industrial, but we decided to make churches allowed. It's kind of if they would, I'm not sure they really would locate in an industrial area, but we went ahead and didn't make that a conditional use permit either. And I didn't mention, I skipped over it, self-service storage was not allowed in light commercial. We changed it to a conditional use. The light commercial zoning should come into play pretty soon when we do the rezoning.
So what kind of use is that?
We would like to. Mr. Marshall and I, he started in April, and he's got a lot of ideas, so we're kind of working through the timeframe and what he wants to tackle first.
I'm pretty good at that. He has the things meeting.
He will. He actually said today that on those meetings, he will definitely be here, because he has a lot to say.
Lord help us.
So he actually will be attending those.
Okay, so now I'm reading the code, and now I have a bunch more questions.
Which section?
So the thing I was looking up was under 3.4.2 Density and Dimensional Standards, because I was trying to find the thing I remembered, which is that under special cases...
Corner lot.
Corner lot, setbacks not adjacent to streets shall be five feet. So if you're a corner lot, you don't have a rear setback anyway, so...
Yeah, so it's one of those odd things.
Which was the thing I was trying to remember, but then I was looking through the exceptions and permitted encroachments to setbacks. And I noticed that accessory buildings are allowed to encroach into rear setbacks anyway?
They are at times, but it makes it very difficult, because then David Farley, when he gets the building permit, has to really decide if it's something in a certain neighborhood that's going to need a variance. It makes it hard to make it uniform. So it makes it easy to be arbitrary, the way it's written, and we'd like to remove that.
So if we're gonna do that, then why are we leaving the possible, I mean, why are we leaving that exception in, I guess, is my question?
Some people have little tiny things, like a birdhouse type thing, that they come in and ask about, and that's what we could leave it in for. But if you would like, that's a change that you can make to take that out.
I'm just curious.
I actually have it highlighted, because we discussed it also, about leaving it and taking it out. So the more people who have input, and the more ideas that come forward, I think the better changes we can make. This is our suggestion, and everybody's ideas, I think, can make it better.
Well, I mean, I hate setbacks anyway, so you won't find me arguing to make them more strict, but I just thought it was...
Yes, I can tell you one case that we had, that we need to leave it in for, that it just came to my mind. Have you heard of Little Free Libraries? They would have had to get a variance if that wasn't in there, for their Little Free Library, because it's not a mailbox, or a flagpole, or something else.
But this only allows you to have accessory buildings within the rear setback, so it wouldn't help us anyway.
Yeah, so you probably want to leave it, because it says setbacks in other dimensional standards for accessory uses and structures, so special cases. So I would leave that in, and then just maybe think of the Little Free Library.
Correct.
Because they're kind of, new things come up all the time. And I think that's one of the reasons that every five-year review, and then the 10-year big review of the land use code is necessary, and should be done diligently, because it's a living document, and we need to use it, and we need to have the best interest of everyone in mind, and we also need to be aware, things change, and especially lately, they change quickly. I had never heard of Little Free Libraries before this year.
Since you brought it up, do we want to add it? We could add it to that list of things that are exempt, since we're changing things.
Well, we thought of that also. And then we had the discussion, and this was a discussion with Mr. Russell, this was before Mr. Marshall came in. We had the discussion, do you make the list exhaustive, and try to think of everything you could ever think of? Because we thought of adding it in. And we didn't take that path, because we'll never think of everything, and we'll miss something that's important. Or something will come up the next week after we finalize this, that we won't have thought of. So that's the reason we decided not to.
I'm just curious, though, were there other things on the list that you were thinking of, besides the Little Free Library thing you could add to this? I just, it's been so in the news since you brought it up.
So new? Not that I recall, but it was a while ago.
I'm gonna shut up now.
Well, also, I think that our goal for this revision, because it's not the large revision, was to try to make it the least complicated, most simple, most obvious changes that we needed to. And we didn't want to get too nitpicky and detailed, because we didn't feel that that should be done without committees and public meetings. And so changing lists of that nature, we didn't really want to go down that path until the big revision in 10 years, well, five years from now. So once again, that's something that you could recommend be changed. I was actually quite surprised that we didn't have any public input. Usually I have people calling about something that nobody has called about.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve staff's recommendation for project number TA 15-01 with the following changes. I'd like to remove the addition in, that we can't find it, revised table 3.4.2, adding a minimum street frontage for the historic commercial district. And also adding a word under screening in section 3.3.1A, A1B. Landscaping shall also be at least eight feet in height, and of sufficient mass to be opaque, or shall become so, or opaque, or something else. Let's just say so, for purposes of the motion, just because that bugged me every time I read it.
It was odd to me also.
So that's, oh, and I have to do with the following findings, and I'd like to go with finding number one, the proposed amendment is in substantial compliance with the town's comprehensive plan.
I guess we'll go ahead and have a roll call vote for this one, right?
Do we have any discussion, or...
Well, we can vote, and then...
You're willing to leave that zero instead of 10?
That's right.
Do we want to have a little more discussion on that?
I just got asked, why, why do I want it to leave it to stay at zero rather than change it to 10? I guess just sort of for the reason that I sort of put forward in the discussion earlier, which is just that, to me, some of those things are sort of compensation for, and sort of allowing interesting things to happen downtown. And I didn't hear any arguments for changing it to 10 feet, that I thought were particularly persuasive. But, on the other hand, I don't think it's really take or break, but that's what I put in the motion anyway. So feel free to vote against it.
Well, it seems like the lots that Jamie's talking about, that would be affected by this, are just the new divisions. And that seems like a good thing to me. Those would be further, further out of the downtown area, and kind of leave more area for sidewalk and street, as opposed to right there.
Well, this is not a setback.
The 10 feet is this way, in other words, do you have 10 feet of distance of storefront, I want to say linear, not linear. Like, so is your storefront, if you're looking at the door, and left and right of the building there, is it 10 feet this way, not setback in? So basically, yeah, that's the...
I see, I see, I see.
Yeah. Which, really, I can't, I just can't think of any businesses that... Which, really, I can't, I just can't think of any businesses that have less than ten.
I can't think why you'd want to, but on the other hand, you know, one of my things with the historic commercial zoning, I think that it's a really good model. And someday, I would love to see it extended. You know, there's a lot of underdeveloped property, for instance, up Hope Street. And sort of my dream someday, if I were king of the world, you know, I would say, you know, we should look to that area to develop more on the downtown model, on those sort of underdeveloped parts of the central city. And so, I just like the flexibility that's there. And since, you know, there weren't, haven't been any really specific reasons why it's even been a problem, I just don't see any reason to mess with it, you know? It's kind of like adding Little Free Libraries to a list. It just sort of seems to me making a change, to my mind, for the purposes of making a change, so.
It might also make new utility taps harder if a property didn't have any street frontage. It makes it all have to be done on Eastman, and it makes it a little difficult. But, once again, it would just be two new divisions. So, if you're comfortable with that, then that works for me.
Are there divisions you think it should stay at zero?
I mean, again, I cannot think of any reason. I can't think of any instance why it would matter one way or another. And so, I guess I'm just sort of defaulting towards what's the most permissive, just because that's something that in this instance, I would value personally. And so, I'm just making the motion from my perspective. Again, since I didn't hear any arguments, that I'm like, oh, well, that makes sense. You know, that should be changed. I mean, I'm not hearing that. It's just sort of a like, well, it's kinda weird. Well, one of the things that I personally value about downtown is that it's kind of weird. So, if we have something that has the potential to preserve or enhance weirdness in the future, I wanna, I wanna hold on to that. Again, that's just me.
Well, what about, yeah, I can think of an instance of somebody... You see in larger cities downtown sometimes where a business front is basically a doorway and then there's a long hallway. And so, even though I can't think of anything here in town like that, I can think where somebody could split and have something along those lines.
Right. And there are, you know, some cities, and we don't really have them here, but, you know, there's like mid-block alleys or weird, cool things that people have done places. And again, you could easily, I suppose, if you were going to develop something like that, you would go to the planning department anyway. But again, I just hate seeing us be restrictive. I want us to be restrictive in places where it matters. I mean, we don't want great and huge internally let signs downtown, for instance. I totally see the reasoning behind those sorts of regulations. But, you know, in places where I just can't see why it matters, I say, just leave it alone. Maybe someone will come up with something cool. Or maybe someone will come up with something just absolutely aberrant and we'll be like, oh, my gosh, we have to fix that. But I just can't see it either way. Yeah, right.
And I can't see anybody really building a building for use as commercial property and not having some frontage. So, it's kind of like...
A moot point, do you?
Yes.
Okay. So, we had a motion, and do we have a second? I can't remember now.
I did a second.
We did have a second? Now, do we want a little more discussion before we vote? Okay, let's call for a vote.
Commissioner Clemens?
Aye.
Commissioner Stephen?
Aye.
Commissioner Sibley?
Aye.
Commissioner Seidenkamp?
Aye.
Okay. So, then this will go to the next, not the next city council meeting, the one after that probably.
It will be in June.
Okay.
First one in June, most likely.
Do we have any other reports from staff?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Reports from commission? Anyone have anything? I'll really quickly just say, because we were discussing this earlier, not just planning and zoning, but there's a number of committees and commissions that have openings. I say this probably every third time, but I'll say it again. Volunteering in a community isn't just good for the community, it's good for you and it makes you feel more a part of your community and more in tune with it. And in a smaller community, you actually have so much more opportunity to make a difference. And so, I really would like people to go on the city site and look at the different committees and commissions and see what openings there are and consider volunteering and applying to be on one. Because we have, you know, we're missing a member here, but we're not the only ones who are missing. So, again, I'll put an appeal out to the public for that. Anything else? Okay, now, accept a motion for adjournment?
It's a moot.
Thank you.